Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting in Greenville City Council. It is Christmas season. You see all of this, time to be in good cheer, good holiday cheer. Everyone should be in their very best behavior and we appreciate everyone being here tonight with us on many different topics. We will be rearranging the agenda tonight so that some people can go on out of here sooner instead of later. I'll tell you about that in a moment. And for those who speak tonight, who signed up to speak, we'll have a little bit of different rules in order for that as well, so just listen out for that. But thank you for all for being here tonight. Please rise for invocation by Councilmember DeWorke followed by the political leaders.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please bow your heads. Thank you, Lord, for this day. Thank you for the rain of the last week, but more importantly, thank you for the sun that we saw today. Thank you for all the citizens that appear before this council. It is truly with your leadership that we all can guide this city to future prosperity. And thank you for all the citizens that we are able to serve in our community. Please bless this council and all the citizens of our great city. It's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Our political leaders supply the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Court will call the roll.
Councilmember John DeWorke.
Here.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Brisington.
Here.
Councilmember Russell Stahl.
Here.
Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox White.
Here.
You have the minutes of November 28th, which will stand approved as submitted unless there are any objections. Seeing none, all right. We're going to move to the presentation first and then we will do a report from the Planning Commission and then take up public comment. Presentation first is a Unity Park fundraiser update. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Both of you. Okay.
Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas to all of y'all.
Merry Christmas.
And thank y'all. I'm Velda Hughes and this is Bill Fox and we're with the Hughes Agency. And I want to thank Mayor White and the council for inviting us to come tonight. I've been wanting to come for a long time and y'all finally invited me, so thank you. Thank you very much. Last Thursday, and some of y'all were there, it was a very big day for us for two great bits of news. One, Vivian Wong and her deceased husband, Thomas, they gave a million dollars to name the tower. So it is, the name of the tower is the Vivian and Thomas Wong Honor Tower. So that was the first bit of news and Vivian was there and those of you that know her, she had a stroke and she's unable to speak. So in a little bit, we're going to show you the video that we put together that she wanted everybody to see it. So anyway, so we got a million dollar gift and that was our fourth million dollar gift and we got $1,250,000. But the other thing that was such a big thing for us, we raised the 5.5 million that y'all asked us to raise to match y'all's dollars. So what I really wanted to say to y'all, it has been a pleasure. It truly has been a pleasure raising this money. And y'all may not want to hear this, but it wasn't hard because this park is so great. It has been a joy to raise this money. There were 25 businesses and individuals that gave to the tower. And if we had anything else to get to sell, we would have more. If that tower had 12 pillars, we would have sold 12. We got to six and that's all we had, so that's all we could sell. What I want y'all to know, what I want each one of y'all to know and all of y'all to know, that park, different than any other park that I am aware of, that park has a heart. It truly has a heart. And the Honor Tower in particularly has a heart. And what I mean by that, they're, the people, the primary donors, Vivian being one, Billy Webster being one honoring his mother, Bo Gossett honoring his mother and father, Doug Harper honoring his mother, father, and his grandparents that started Harper Corporation. And I could go on and on, but I've got five or six more and they want their own announcement, so I can't tell you who they are. It's a secret. But anyway, these people gave this money for this tower because they wanted their parents and their family to be remembered for perpetuity, but they also had an unbelievable love and care for first responders and veterans. And so it has been a pleasure and there's been a lot of tears. You can imagine when you leave money, you give money to somebody and you want your parents to be remembered. It means a lot. So where we are now, we've got to get this tower built and we've got to make sure that we follow through with what we've said we were going to do because it's personal matters. It's personal. Okay, another thing, none of us ever knew there were going to be 10,000 children playing at the water park. So we never knew that they were going to stomp down one of the gardens. You know, beautiful garden here again. It is honoring somebody that's no longer with us. So we are literally going to take that garden and the family wants it moved to the tower. They want it to be part of all of that. We have another gift that I can't tell you about, but it's a $750,000 gift to the tower. And you'll learn soon why they gave that money. But anyway, it's been a real, real pleasure. It's been an honor. I love the whole park. I can't say enough about it. It's just very meaningful and I love it. I want y'all to, Vivian asked that each one of y'all see her, the video. So we're going to play the video for you right now. Some of y'all were there and you saw it. I think you can see why I said that it's a place that has a heart. Vivian cried the whole day and right before she left, she got a little piece of paper and she wrote, "This is the best day of my life." And so I'm just honored to be a part of it and thank y'all all. Bill Fox, he is the one that actually wrote the three grants that we got the million dollars for, so he knows a lot more about the numbers. I tend to talk a lot and he tends to have all the numbers. So Bill, would you like to add anything to what I've said?
I don't have a whole lot to add. I did bring, what you see on the screen in front of you are the Honor Tower Challenge coins that we had created and I brought some for each of the council members to see if maybe you can pass that out. It should be plenty. And I would just add to what Velda said. I think one of the things I'm most proud of in regards to the public support and generosity towards the tower is the representation of the diversity of our community. It is a hugely, truly diverse contribution from a variety of different kinds of people, different companies, individuals, different foreign nationalities represented. And it really does, in my thinking, represent this community and what makes us special and truly unique. So we do have, as Velda said, quite a few announcements to make over the coming months. We have some big, considerable donors that we need to recognize and we look forward to doing that.
Thank you for your great hard work. It's a pleasure to have a partnership with you and we look forward to reaching out to many others who are out there who want to be part of it as well.
I will say, we received a check just this morning for $5,000 from a donor who had reached out. I called them last week. They just wanted to be a part of the tower and wondered how they could be a part of that and they sent me a check. We got a call last week from a donor who wanted to give us $10,000 to sponsor a bench in Unity Park as part of Phase One of Unity Park. So there's about roughly $2 million on the table that I think we could continue to raise. There's been an outpouring of support to be a part of this park in some fashion, so.
Great work. Thank you.
All right, I got one more thing. Y'all know Phase One is funded, Phase Two is funded, Phase Three is funded. Maybe one day, there's not enough places to sit. Maybe someday there can be some swings and more places to sit, but for right now, I think it's just perfect. So thank y'all all. Appreciate everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Rain Arthur here? Mr. Arthur?
Thank you.
Hi. I know you signed up with Bill Fox. I didn't know what you're with Bill. Okay.
Good evening. This is my first time at a council meeting, so I'm excited and nervous all at the same time. I was asked to come and give my thoughts about the Honor Tower and I am a preacher, but I kept my coming short, so.
You better.
To Mr. Mayor and the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of the significant changes we've seen on the southern side, which is where I've spent my entire life until I started working at BMW. I'm a Red Raider for life as I am a Greenville High School alumni. I find, I also find value in my faith community, my village that helped shape me. Tonight, we are applauding the financial accomplishments that help make changes possible, but as I raise my voice for the less concrete ideas of humanity and the human spirit. So when I think about the Honor Tower, I think about when I'm on a plane and when I'm flying into these bigger cities and I fly into New York, I'm looking for the Statue of Liberty. When I'm flying into San Francisco, I think about the Golden Gate Bridge. So when I'm on the plane and I'm flying back into GSP, I said, "What wonder would it be for me to fly in, open that window?" And I look out the window and I'm flying over Greenville, South Carolina, and I get to look down and see the Honor Tower. It is a joy for me to bring friends here. Everybody that I bring here, all my friends from up north, they absolutely love Greenville. They love the Unity Park. And as I was telling them about the plans for the Honor Tower, they got even more excited and they're looking forward to come back once it's completed. So I thank you for this opportunity to give my thoughts and I pray that everything goes smoothly. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All righty, we have, council, let me get your advice. We have Shannon with the Planning Commission report. I noticed it was at the very end of the long agenda and that doesn't seem very fair to people who've come out here tonight. So I was thinking getting Shannon up front.
Mayor, can we do the financial presentation, the audit?
Oh, that's really going to clear the room.
Before we jump to Shannon.
Okay, well, we'll do that and then we counsel after that. Shannon first and then bring people up to make comments.
Yeah, that sounds great. I was going to say, Joe Farmer's here about BZA.
Oh, that's true. We do have one, yeah, that's true, we do have one other, Mr. Farmer on BZA. Okay. All right, well, let's get this done first.
Larry, are you ready to go?
Mr. Farmer, you get the privilege of being, because after we get the finance report, you're after the finance report. After the finance report.
Okay. Two minutes here.
No, they didn't go. He's already there.
Well, I'm so impressed of you. You came right up that fast. Now, that's a model for how you come to the podium, by the way. You hustle up here. Okay. Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's my pleasure tonight to introduce Larry Finney from our external audit firm to present our audited financial results. Before I turn it over to Larry for the program, I just want to acknowledge a few folks. First, Greenville produces not just a basic set of financial statements, we produce what's called the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, which is an in-depth report with lots of detail and statistics and explanation behind the numbers. So I first want to acknowledge Karen Crawford, who puts many, many, many hours into that above and beyond her day-to-day. That's her baby. Karen actually worked for the external audit firm for the very first time the city of Greenville won the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report Award. So Karen's been through that for every award that we've won for that document. So I wanted to thank Karen for all of her efforts. And then the results that Mr. Finney is going to report is a reflection on the partnership between staff, management, and the department heads, excuse me, council management and the department heads. It takes a vision, it takes strong leadership, and it takes the department heads doing their, pulling their weight to bring together positive financial results. So I wanted to acknowledge those folks before I turn it over to Larry to deliver the good news. Is it Larry?
Thank you, Matt. Mayor, council members, Mr. McDonough, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Mayor, I'm going to keep it short and sweet.
No, it's fine.
I promise.
It's very important, good news.
It is important because it's what allows us to do things like Unity Park and all the other great things that the city has around here, so.
Right.
Two things. Want to talk a little bit about where we are financially as of the last year-end and then also talk about the actual results of the audit itself. So I want to start out talking about general fund, fund balance. And the reason I do is if you were to talk to anybody in the municipal finance world and you would ask them, "What's one measurement they want to know to see how the city's doing?" They're going to say, "Let me know, let me see your general fund, fund balance." So you can see that the city's fund balance was a total of about $40 million for the year. It decreased about $10 million, but I'm going to talk about that on the next slide because a lot of that's due to the new fund balance policy that you passed recently. So you can see when it's all said and done, that last slide, the unassigned fund balance is what people really want to pay attention to. Almost $29 million represents about 32% of what the actual expenditures were for the year. So with that, your policy is actually 20%. And then you passed a new policy this year that basically said, "Once we get above that 20%, 80% of that's going to go to capital projects," which was almost $16 million, which is why you saw the decrease in your fund balance overall for the year. And then above that, then there's $250,000 that goes to each city council, district, capital project for up to $1 million. And so even with doing all of that, your actual general fund, fund balance is still a little over $8 million above what your policy is. So that's some great news. How'd we get there? You can see on the general fund revenue side, whether we look at this year, 108 million, whether we compare it to last year, we compare it to budget, great results. Most of it is because of property tax revenue increases and your licenses, permits, et cetera. And then on the expenditure side, you can see expenditures were about $91 million, about $6 million more than what was in the prior year and you can see the highlights of that. But you're about, almost $8 million under budget. So that's really what you want to see, right? Revenues over budget, expenditures under budget, and that's why you ended up with the good results for the year. So the one thing that was different this year with your general fund was the transfers in and out. And you can see the transfers out were pretty significant, $63 million. Almost all of that was capital projects and I'm going to talk more specifically about that in just a moment. Matter of fact, here it is, right here. So you can see in the capital projects fund, your fund balance is about $73 million and you've got all kinds of different plans for how you're going to use that money. But if you go about halfway down, you'll see the transfer in of $58 million from general fund. $16 million of that was because of your new policy. $28 million was because of the neighborhood infrastructure bonds and then you can see the rest was budgeted and planned. So hospitality taxes, your other pretty significant fund, you've got about $5.5 million in your fund balance policy and you continue to use those funds as they're restricted. The other thing that actually the federal government or the state government ask us to do is because the city receives a significant amount of federal funds as well as state funds, we're asked to look at the city's compliance. We select some different funds every year to look at. This year, it was the second set of the coronavirus state local fiscal relief funds. No issues, everything looked great. We also issue a management letter to you, which is both some required communications from us as well as if there's anything significant that we feel like we need to put in writing to bring to your attention, of which there was none. We always sit down with the city manager and finance staff and talk about various issues just as the city continues to improve on how it does what it does. So what the city asks us to do then is to perform our audit and the end result of that audit is the opinion that we issue. So a couple of things I'd just like to remind you when we talk about this is when you look at the financial statements themselves, even though we physically prepare the statements, they're the city's, they're yours. I talked with Karen this morning, they just got to the printer today, so hopefully you'll be getting the final copies very soon. But you ask us to issue the opinion and I am glad to tell you that for this last year-end, the city received an unmodified opinion, which I know that doesn't mean anything to anybody, so what I like to tell you is that's the best opinion you can receive. It really doesn't matter whether you're BMW, GE, or the city of Greenville, your goal is to receive that unmodified opinion. So council, management, finance staff ought to be very, very pleased with that. I want to echo what Matt said. Karen and her staff do a fantastic job and Karen puts a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into seeing this through and getting it done, so we really appreciate her help. And so finally, you received that unmodified opinion that you want to get, your financial condition is very healthy, and as Matt mentioned, you did receive, for the last fiscal year, you received that award again from the Government Finance Officers Association. So good news all the way around. Be glad to answer any questions anybody has.
Any questions from council? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have to use this opportunity, should we do it?
Your main.
Recognize, ma'am. We want to use this opportunity. We are in great financial shape. We've been blessed for many years with really great financial CEOs, really, our CFO of the city, and none better than Matt Effer. And Matt is leaving us to take a job in North Carolina where his wife is from and it's a tremendous loss for us, but he's also taught us a lot. Not only does he run a great ship, as you just heard with Karen, audit side and everything else, but he is the master of creative, creatively addressing financing with the city, how to get the job done. Matt's one of those rare individuals, the answer is never no. It's always, "Well, let me think about it and there may be another way to do it." And that's how we do so many things, almost jaw-dropping things around here to fund so many great projects. The Neighborhood Improvement Bond is going to be a great testimony to him as well. So we want to wish Matt the very well and use this opportunity. It's very hard to even stand up here and do this, but Matt, thank you for your services to City of Greenville and the conference council. Have them here. It's like EF Hutton with us too. When Matt speaks, everybody listens. Council has such tremendous confidence in everything Matt has done and we so much appreciate his services beyond words. Thank you. Okay, now parts of what some people came here for. Mr. Farmer, you're up with your comp three minutes rule. And then we'll turn to Shannon, I think, and then we'll have comments from the public.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations. I'm Joe Farmer, 207 Alpine Way. Congratulations, you have two new hotels. Let me share with you the Board of Zoning Appeal Chair's quote from the last meeting. "It is not the BZA decision to make policy, it is the BZA's job to approve requests unless there's a reason to deny. I express that it's the BZA's job to deny special exemptions unless there's a demonstrated need or exceptional reason to approve them. You need to give guidance to the BZA on how special exemptions are debated. There seems to be a disconnect. Special exemptions need to be special. Ten requests for short-term rentals in the last three months is not special. Please remove this short-term rental loophole that allows us for office districts. Let me share you the story of Witsit Street in the historic Pettigrew District. Our Greenville elders built homes, raised families, and established a neighborhood. They looked after each other, loaned a rake or a ladder, picked up the newspaper for an elderly neighbor, and watched each other's children. Then economification came. The homes were more valuable for office space than for residential. First, it was an attorney, then an accountant, then a financial planner, then a bed and breakfast, and finally, short-term rentals. And now would the BZA approve what the last resident would be leaving? Forty years ago, no one on Witsit Street would have thought that one day no residents would live on the street. The people on Stone Avenue thought the same. The people on Mills Avenue thought the same. The people on your street think the same. It won't happen here. Unless we put a stop to this, we will be a city with no residents, just office space and short-term rentals. So remember Witsit Street. As the last resident, excuse me, as the last resident packs the last box, turns off the last light, locks the last door for the last time, it ends the history of residents on this street in the historic Pettigrew District."
Thank you. Okay, Shannon, we'll take this whole matter up first so people can have comments and then can leave and we'll go back to the regular agenda for the other folks who are here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So, good evening. Here we are again considering the woven. And tonight, we are going to present the Planning Commission's report on the woven plan development rezoning and annexation request. The full report and updated project renderings were posted on the city's website on Friday and are available for public review. This slideshow provides a summary update of the report. I encourage everyone, including all of our members of the public that are here with us this evening, to review the full report on the city council's agenda center. Before we get started, I would like to thank the members of my team that are here this evening, Mary Douglas Hirsch and Michael Frickson, who helped tremendously with the preparation of the report, as well as our Planning Commission Chair, Meg Terry. So they're all here in attendance this evening and we thank them for being here. Okay, next slide, please. As you will recall, the woven project is a mixed-use plan development and annexation request for 12 properties totaling 2.91 acres next to the Village of West Greenville. Next slide. Here, you can see the six parcels currently in the city limits and six in the county. All 12 would be included within the rezoning. The property is located within the West Greenville Special Emphasis Neighborhood. Next slide. Again, here are the six parcels and right-of-way segments that would be annexed into the city. Next slide. Here is the original proposal that Planning Commission voted on at their July meeting and which was presented to city council for first reading in August. And as you can see at the request, it was an annexation of six parcels into the city limits, a redevelopment of the 12 total parcels, 254 multifamily residential units at 10% of the units shown at affordable at 80% AMI, 30,000 square feet of commercial space for restaurant, retail, and artist galleries, including 3,000 square foot of retail incubator space, a pocket park available to the public, relocation and restoration of the mortgage house, infrastructure improvements on Pendleton, Seaco, Smith, and Traction, as well as a mix of mill-like and modern architecture. Next slide, please. The Planning Commission originally voted on the application at its July 21st meeting. The commission recommended denial of the application to city council with concerns for mass, scale, setbacks, and density. Next slide, please.
Slides aren't changing or my slides aren't changing. Your slides. Okay.
There we go. Thank you. At its second reading on October 24th, council voted to remand the request back to Planning Commission for further review and recommendation. On the screen before you is the exact motion from city council. The motion included exact elements for Planning Commission to review. These included: density, mass, scale, open space transition between the main portion of the project and the community, connectivity with surrounding communities, traffic mitigation, affordable housing, height. Council asked for Planning Commission's report to be presented back to city council by December 12th, which is today. This report was provided to you formally in your agenda packet on Friday, December 9th. Next slide, please. Since you all considered this item at second reading, the Planning Commission met for three special call meetings and spent multiple hours reviewing the project. three special call meetings and spent multiple hours reviewing the project. At its meeting on November 29th, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the project with conditions by five to one vote. Commissioner Martinez was not present for the vote. Next slide please. Before we review the Planning Commission's motion and conditions in full, we will go through the updated plans and renderings that were presented at the Planning Commission meeting on November 29th. Next slide please. Here is the updated site layout. A few things to point out. The development layout is essentially the same as before. You will see the locations of both buildings with Smith Street located between them. Infrastructure and road improvements are proposed throughout the project. Smith Street will be widened and have added sidewalks and street trees. Sidewalks will be improved along all extents of the project with a wide sidewalk along Pendleton Street to help extend the pedestrian realm of the village and provide future connectivity to a trail that the county is working on. You will notice that the additional parcel, aka the Logan House, incorporated as open space to the rear of the left-hand building. This is consistent with the previous request from council to add this to the pocket park. As a legal note, and for the record, this parcel cannot be added to the PD at this point of the project, but the developer has indicated the intent to purchase the property and include it as part of the green space. With the open space and the addition of stairs and sidewalks behind the buildings, the project includes improved connectivity across these blocks from Seaco Street to Traktion Street. Next slide please. Here is the conceptual landscape plan prepared by Seaman Whiteside. The species and locations will be reviewed during the final development plan and permit stage. You will notice street trees, landscape buffers, and other elements included across the site. Next slide please. So here's where we begin the building changes. For these slides, the new design is shown on top and the original is on the bottom. So as we flip through with these, the new, the revised design is on top, the original is on the bottom. These are the buildings along Pendleton Street. The front buildings have been designed at two stories along Pendleton Street in order to help match the existing village commercial district. These buildings have distinct architecture from the rest of the project and are intended to extend the existing storefront stylings of the village. Behind the two-story buildings, the project increases in height to five stories. Beyond these, and you'll see on the next few slides, the building height has been reduced to four stories in certain locations. I'll just let you see that for a second. Okay, next slide. This is the project from the south, so imagine that you're looking north. Seaco Street is on the left, Smith Street is in the middle, leading up to the intersection with Lois Avenue, and Traktion Street is on the right. The buildings here have been reduced from five stories to four. This was accomplished by lowering the parking garage a full level and removing units. The new density is approximately 214 units. I will cover more about density later, but this is to explain how they were able to get to four stories. Also, please notice the updated architecture. The architects removed the white low-country architecture at the request of the Planning Commission. The commission felt that the overall, overall architecture was too busy in trying to appease too many interests. The commission encouraged the owner and developer to own the design and make the project his own instead of having so many different elements incorporated into the overall architecture. The commission believed that the revised architecture is more cohesive and integrates better as a whole. These rear elevations match the mill-like architecture, which is also used for the five-story portion used closer to Pendleton Street. As a reminder, this part of the project also includes the open space and two-story Morgan House, which is being relocated and restored as part of this project. Next slide. Building heights. There was a request for clarification on the building heights. Along the rear of the project, the building heights are as follows. You've got them listed there. Next slide please. Back to the front for another view from along Pendleton Streets. The building heights there have not changed, but we've called them out on this slide. So the building heights along Pendleton did not change. For comparison, the woven project compares to other developments in the city as follows. The Kempton is 73 feet tall on Markley that has been approved but not yet constructed. The Southern Side Senior Housing that has been approved at the corner of Hudson and Washington is 47 feet with four stories primarily, also not yet to be constructed. Woodside Mill is 70 feet 10 inches at five stories. Brandon Mill is 67 feet 6 inches for the Pendleton Street-facing side, and 81 feet 10 inches for the stream-facing side. Woven's final height, 71 feet, five stories. Next slide. This is the design along Seaco Street. Here you can clearly see how the building heights transition along the block, with the majority of the building now at four stories. This view also prominently features the modern color block design intended to reflect the artistic nature of the village. The colors vary across the side of each building. One entrance to the parking garage is located along Seaco Street. Again, we are focusing on the top image for these slides. The bottom is the old design, the top is the new version that was recommended by the Next slide. Here we are looking at the same building, but from the Smith Street side. Again, you see the step backs and the five-story portion along Pendleton with four stories at the project, as the project transitions into the neighborhood. The garage entrance is about halfway down the building. Okay, next slide. And this is the second smaller building between Smith and Traktion Streets. This is looking from the Smith Street side, so the left-hand side in this image is the part closer to Pendleton Street. While we're here, let me call attention to the mural on the two-story part of the building. That is the corner of Smith and Pendleton Street. The Planning Commission recommended removing the mural and instead providing more activation and transparency at this prominent corner where Lois Avenue and Smith Street intersect with Pendleton. Again, you see the transition, two stories, five stories, four stories. Next slide. Lastly, this is the design along Traktion Street. This has a lot going on in this slide. The building mass here actually steps back for the whole middle portion to provide space for the swimming pool. The pool is not at street level, it's elevated one story. The four-story part of the building is then set back along that whole area. Also, along this front edge, you have retail incubator space that will be leased at 50% of the commercial rates in the central business district. There are five storefront areas that total approximately 2,900 square feet for these retail spaces. Those are visible along the base of the five-story portion to the right in this image. So if you look into the right, you'll see those spaces. In the rear, the elevation actually reduces across the site, so this appears to be five stories. From the rear of the project, it appears as four stories with the basement, it still represents removal of the top floor in this area. So now we're going to move on to the renderings. Next slide. This view is along Smith Street, which will be widened, have curb and gutter, a curb lawn, street trees, and sidewalks. The commission was originally concerned with a canyon effect along Smith Street, but felt more comfortable after seeing these renderings. The commission also observed that street trees can help reduce the effect of building height from the pedestrian perspective. The architect indicated that these trees are not shown at full maturity and provide more relief as they continue to grow. On the left, about halfway down along the building, you can see the entrance to the parking garage. The commission and staff request that wayfinding signage be added for any public parking spaces that are provided. The commission did have conversation concerning wayfinding signage throughout their deliberations. Next slide please. Here's the view from Pendleton Street looking at Traktion. Bar Margaret is on the left-hand side. You can see the retail commercial space along Pendleton Street and the retail incubator spaces heading down Traktion. Rooftop patio provides additional activation at this corner. I will also point out how this illustration shows how the center part of the building is stepped back from Traktion. The pool is located above ground level in this location. The applicant responded to staff and commission requests to improve the architecture. This mill-like style is the primary design that you will see on the remaining portions of the project. Next slide. This rendering shows the front of the project located around the intersection with Lois Avenue and Pendleton Street. The first break is where Smith Street enters the project and leans into the neighborhood. The second break, between the cream-colored and green buildings, is a new public plaza, which provides relief in the building mass and serves as an amenity area for the project. And this is something that council had not been seen, has not seen before, but we were asked about it. So staff went and flew the city's drone, thanks to Greg Dawkins and our engineering department, in order to provide an accurate representation of the height of a five-story building at Pendleton Street. This is looking from eye level across from the West Greenville Plaza down towards the village. The drone location as marked on the slide is at 68.5 feet in height, or five stories. Next slide. Staff prepared this before the fifth floor was removed and we received the updated design, but this does show what a five-story building would look like as you enter the village. Keep in mind, the top floor was removed, the white part of the architecture has also been removed, so the entire design has changed. But we were asked to show this and I wanted to show you what we had done and what we presented Planning Commission.
So the middle section is four stories.
Now it is, yes, sir.
Now, okay, so it takes off.
And the next slide. In the time since the developer originally submitted the application, Greenville County has adopted a new affordable housing incentive through a mechanism called a multi-county industrial park. I won't get into all of the details on that tonight, but because of that, the developer would make 20% of the total units affordable. At 214 units, this would be 44 units. Within those units, the breakdown is as follows. 20%, 80% AMI, 60%, at 60% AMI, 20% at 40% AMI, and the rents are shown on the screen in front of you. The developer researched the currently affordable housing guidelines for Greenville County, which are updated by HUD annually, and presented these numbers at the Planning Commission meeting. The original application proposed 10% of the total units at 80% AMI. This revised application with the new affordability incentive represents an increase in the affordable housing component of the project. Because South Carolina does not allow for inclusionary zoning, a plan development is one of the few opportunities that the city has available to include affordability within the project, or to negotiate affordability within the project. Next slide. In the meeting since the project was remanded back to Planning Commission, commission provided comments and feedback on the original proposal and responded to initial changes presented by the proposal. At the November 17th meeting, the commission asked the developer to take a step back and reconsider the overall design. They felt it was too busy in trying to make too many different people happy and was resulting in a design that did not make sense and was thereby fragmented. They also said that the architecture was critical to help overcome concerns of height and mass. The development team then got to work and updated the project and the architecture. The plans that we just went through were presented to the Planning Commission on November 29th. After deliberation and extensive discussion on each point requested by city council, the commission voted to recommend, recommend approval of the woven PD and annexation by a five to one vote with conditions. If we could go to the next slide, please. The motion included the applicable staff reports and staff comments and conditions, plus these following conditions. Recommendation is based on the site plans, elevations, renderings, and architectural preliminary design presented on November 29th. Parking ratio shall be no greater than 1.6 spaces per market rate unit and no greater than one space per affordable unit. Any additional spaces resulting from reductions are encouraged for further public parking. Based on 214 units, the total number of affordable units shall be 44 units with AMI unit counts as presented. Architecture currently shown as the wall with the mural at the corner of Smith and Pendleton Streets shall be revised to provide activation with the final design approval at the FDP stage. I will add that the commission received many, many public comments, both written and presented as part of the public hearing. There were voices on either side of the project. As with every project that goes before the commission, these comments were received and considered prior to the commission's vote. And so as a recap, the Planning Commission now recommends approval of the woven project as presented at its November 29th meeting with staff comments and conditions and the conditions presented here. Detailed analysis of each of the items from the council's motion to remand is included in the full Planning Commission report, which as a reminder, was provided to you on Friday. And so I'd like, we're at the end here, last slide please, to take this opportunity to thank the Planning Commission members for their time and meeting for three times in the month of November to get us to this point and respond to the deadline imposed by city council. I'd also like to thank the community members who have been at all of our meetings, made time out of their schedules to come and attend and to voice their, their concerns or their support, either way, and also to take the time to send in written comments for each of the Planning Commission meetings. And of course, finally, I would like to thank the planning staff who has worked tremendously hard on this project, just getting us to this point and just helping to facilitate the process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for Shannon, which to say?
No. I would like to reiterate your thanks to the Planning Commission and to planning staff. This is, this is a complicated, difficult project, remains a complicated and difficult project, and I know that Planning Commission and staff has put a ton of work into it, and I just wanted to tell them I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we do.
Mr. Mayor, I've got one question. So on the affordable housing unit count, when we look at 60% AMI and 40% AMI as proposed to the revised project that Planning Commission endorsed, do we know what sort of percentage increase that would represent within the city if approved in terms of, you know, how that would impact specifically 60% AMI unit counts citywide and 40% respectively?
I don't, but we could get that for you before your next meeting. That would be a conversation I'd want to hold with our community development team and the Greenville Housing Fund. Most of the projects that, I can only think of two projects recently that have had 60% that you all have approved through a rezoning process, that being, or through, through the MCIP process, that being the McLaren and the Agfa properties. We've also approved the Lawrence and Ackley Project, which was going to have AMIs as low as 30%, I believe, but I would want to confirm that with the developer, and as well as also the Southern Side Senior Living Complex at the corner of Washington and Hudson, which also had lower than 60% AMIs. So we could find that information out for you, Councilmember Brazington, but I don't have all of the numbers tonight.
Thank you.
If you're, if you're gathering data.
Yes, ma'am.
I would, I have tried to do this after a meeting with the developer last week, which I appreciate, and I will say the developer has been very willing to meet and transparent as, as, you know, by all accounts to me. The affordable housing units in terms of count and percent and monthly fall into regulation. That's part of the MCIP, we have a community development group that monitors that and a process set up for it. Where I can't find clear definition is on the micro retail. So in our discussions, it was pinned down as 50% of the CBD rates at, at something defined to me as double-A retail space. I'm not a retailer and don't know about that, Councilmember Dworkin might, but I, you know, I can't put a number on that. I did spend some time with our economic development group and it's kind of a space that we don't dabble in for obvious reasons. I'm just trying to get to, what's the monthly? What will, you know, in, where we are right now, at rates right now in the CBD, and if the developer could provide that based on where we are on downtown rates right now, what would be 50% of double-A retail right now for monthly rent on those micro, on those incubator spaces? That would be helpful.
Yes, we can.
Oh, and, I'm sorry, sorry.
Let's go.
And what process will be used to have oversight over that? We have a clear process for- We have a clear process for oversight over the affordable housing rental units? This is something different, and what I don't want to do is have anything that encumbers our staff to be responsible, accountable for micro-managing that or even managing it. So if you could get that with the developer, I'd appreciate it.
We'll ask the developer to provide us a plan of how we would be able to review that, and then we'll have our economic development team review that as a second opinion and provide their thoughts on how we can monitor that on an annual basis.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just, I don't have any real comments right now on this project, but I do want to echo what Councilor Gibson said. You know, I get so many people in my district say, "My gosh, how do you get all this done?" It's because of staff. It really is. So this is a great example of just incredible commitment and passion you have for the city, and just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And we continue to receive comments and letters and emails. I want to tell you, a long time I've been doing this, the letters and emails and comments from the neighborhood and from interested parties around the city have been some of the best I've ever received, and I appreciate the thoughtful approach that people have had, and we've tried to be thoughtful about it, too. And what we've seen with the planning commission is an effort to make changes. That doesn't mean that more changes can't be made, because we may have ideas on that. I've already had some come actually from the developer, as well as from some neighborhood folks as well, and we'll see where we end up when we finally take this up in January. When are we voting on this, Shannon? Do you remember the date? Do you know the date?
If you, if you choose to put in on your January agenda, the two dates are January 9th and January 23rd.
Happy New Year, yeah. Okay, we'll do that. We do have folks who signed up to speak tonight, the three-minute rule, many of you we've heard from before. I hope you'd be mindful of that, and perhaps be mindful that as you give us comments, we're looking for new ideas and new comments, if people have them, and for maybe even new people. We're going to do something a little bit different when we, to move along with this tonight. I'm going to ask one or two people to come up at a time, so we don't have a lot of people taking so long from the rear, but as we saw tonight, it is possible to hustle to the front, but I don't want to cause everyone to have to do that. With that, we have Ms. Anglin, Candace Anglin, and Carol Cox. You'd be the two to come up first, and we appreciate your comments. We have a three-minute rule here, but again, we've heard comments, and we'll have additional opportunity for comments at the January meeting as well. So, thank you.
Hey, this is my first time at a city council. So I'm on Saco Street, and so this is against the woven project. We're already having an influx in traffic because the area is popular and a lot of businesses come in the area. Me and my husband have lived there almost 10 years, and I'm from Greenville. There's so much traffic, we've had a pet be run over, my husband literally had to save one of the neighbor kids from the road. So my biggest concern is traffic. I know she was saying they were widening in Smith Street, but Saco Street is, it's just a small, little neighborhood road. Over 200 units, I just can't imagine what the construction's going to be like and what the influx of traffic for people like me that are just trying to live my life there, and how that's going to affect my everyday life and how I'm going to be able to even get in my driveway some days. And another thing that's always concerning is the affordability. We've had our rent go up at least four times in the last four years. I think this will just continue to do so. I can't speak for my homeowners and annex and all that, but just from affordability. I love living in Greenville, I work in Greenville, but the way things are going, I might have to leave Greenville. And I don't want to have to leave Greenville because of rent costs. So if something has to be built, far as something like this, less 20% or less being affordable is just not going to cut it in that area. There's a lot of people that's already had to leave that area that's still working Greenville, a couple of my friends, to be exact. So I guess just consider, when you're voting, just think about people that have to live and work in the area. And I love Greenville, and I want to stay here. And everybody have a good evening, Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I'm Carol Cox. Do I need to give my address or anything? I do?
We got it, in Del Street.
Wasn't sure. This is the first time I speak at city, but thank you very much for having me. I come to ask that you, council members, would please just deny the woven project as it looks at this time. As a West Greenville senior, I see this project as an effort to continue to marginalize an area that needs more than just 214 apartments and four and five stories in these buildings. West Greenville has many seniors who do not have transportation to get to the grocery store, let alone a grocery store. We don't have ways to get to the doctor or other places that we might need to go. So, but I believe West Greenville does need, what I mentioned, a grocery store, maybe even restaurants that we could go to as families and afford the meal. And also sidewalks that are just irreplaceable, that are just, need to be repaired so badly now. Our community center needs to be repaired so we can continue to have activities for seniors, as well as the children in our community of West Greenville. Speed bumps, man, we could use speed bumps on Queen Street because now we're the cut through from West Greenville, excuse me, the Village of West Greenville to Unity Park, which is fine, but the speed bumps would help a lot with traffic. We don't need apartments of this nature that a developer may build and in three, two to three years, sale and be out of the place. But we need a place where we people of this community, West Greenville community, can shop, work, and play, and continue, we just feel like we continue to be left out when it comes to having what we have asked for and what we need to live in a safe and healthy area of this area. And as you all know, gentrification is rapidly happening, and woven will just continue to add to that. It's a large project, it takes away from our little last-meal Main Street, West Greenville, and it's just entirely too big, and we would ask that council would deny it, and we, it really hurts, hurts my heart to think that city council members would vote yes to such a project that says to my neighborhood, if you do that, that you care more about the financial gain than about your community in the West Greenville area. Thank you.
Thank you for your specificity. We are working on a grocery store, by the way, stay tuned, 2323, we'll hope to get a grocery store there. Let's see, Ann King and Mr. Campbell could come line up.
I'm Ann King. Opposition is simple. Woven's too big. There's no one that I know of opposed to thoughtful, inclusive development on this site. We're opposed to the mass of woven, not just the height, but four to five stories in height combined with a footprint that is larger than the 120-year-old Brandon Mill, according to dimensions provided by the planning department. Woven will divide neighborhoods and dominate an historic town center, a gem in, as one elected official recently described, "The Emerald Necklace of Greenville's Historic Textile Crescent." We all recognize that this special three acres in the heart of West Greenville can redefine the community for generations. Shouldn't a fully-defined node aligned with Greenville 2040 guide the development of this site? Shouldn't residents have a greater voice in how their community grows? Shouldn't we share a common vision for the future of West Greenville before structures of this magnitude are considered, much less approved? There are so many alternatives, including Missing Middle. In fact, Missing Middle is a form recommended for this area on page 64 of the Greenville 2040 Plan, and is a model championed by the Greenville Housing Fund. Missing Middle is nationally defined as a range of house-scale buildings with multiple units, compatible in scale and form with detached, single-family homes, located in a walkable neighborhood. Examples include duplexes, quadplexes, and cottage court apartments, not massive apartment structures. Woven has never been about weaving together a community. In fact, it will build a physical and psychological barrier between Brandon, the original town center, and West Greenville. From the beginning, woven has been Woodfield's standard model wedged into West Greenville and designed to be sold in three years. A local developer captured one of the truest things I've heard recently: often the most vulnerable are the least represented. You are now considering the future of a singular place in all of Greenville as our elected representatives. We ask you to take the long view, vote to deny woven, and instead consider how to engage and foster diverse community here, actually weave together neighborhoods. This can be another Greenville model for how to get it right. Grow forward, celebrate community and the city's textile heritage, and retain the historic scale, rhythm, and character of West Greenville's town center. Or not.
Thank you very much. Mr. Campbell?
Say, years ago, when I was on city council in Charleston, South Carolina, we would look at models around the country for affordable housing. We were dealing with gentrification on a scale that Greenville is now just experiencing. And we were always impressed, we were impressed by how these communities, which were called liquor house communities, were revitalized and maintained the people who had traditionally been in those communities. We'd seen developments after developments, so-called revitalization developments, really be the catalyst for moving people out. And so Greenville has always been a model community for, as the young lady said, doing things right. I watched recently with a lot of interest, the uproar that happened where the warehouse development was going to be taking place, and the community didn't know about it, and they raised up on it. And I said to myself, how similar that is to what has happened here, as this community feels similar as it relates to being ignored, its wishes, development that doesn't fit in with the character of the community. And I'd like to see the city council protect both of these neighborhoods in the same type of way. I'm looking forward, I've watched, and I've been pleased with seeing how this council has grappled with this issue, the planning commission has grappled with this issue, continued to grapple. But at the end of the day, I'm going to say it, the African-American, you know, I'm chairman of the Democratic Black Caucus here, we have a coalition of African-American business people, African-American clergy, African-American professionals, and we're taking a very serious interest in these type of issues. And in January, we'll be here in force to see what is the result of it, and then respond accordingly. We've supported, again, I said this last time, the majority of council members here, we've supported you, and we want to see you support us in return. Thank you. You guys have a very happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, all that good stuff. God bless you.
Ms. Slack and Ms. Biggins? Is it working okay? Have everybody on with me, Doug?
I think everything's working great. I, too, want to thank everybody. Planning commission, I know you guys have gone out of your way. We've met with you, we've talked with you, I've talked with many council members, and I thank you for really looking at this project. I had to change my opening statements, though, because we celebrated Unity Park. Unity Park, when it was built in 1938, crossed a great division when Meadowbrook was built, and today we have tried to repair that division that was caused back then. Was Meadowbrook a good park? Was it a good idea? Absolutely, it was wonderful. National leagues played there. It was a great idea, but it was in the wrong place, just like woven, it's in the wrong place. But just like, just like West Greenville, Meadowbrook Park was brought here because of Shoeless Joe and the textile baseball leagues. Sorry, I'm trying to read my notes, I'm trying to get through this. I know you've heard many times, "Please stop tearing down Greenville's history." I'm not asking you that, I'm asking you to stop ignoring Greenville's wonderful history, the textile industry. If it's not for the textile industry, Greenville would not be the manufacturing mecca it is today. I know Mayor White and many others have deep roots here. I know you love Greenville. I'm just asking you not to turn your back on this beautiful history and to work with the citizens. That's one thing that hasn't happened in West Greenville. I've lived there for now, I think, 15 years. When I moved there, there was a, there was a community association. Greenville City said, "Stop the community association, we only want a business association." City comes in, says, "We're rebranded, we don't want to be called West Greenville anymore." It got rebranded. The community got left out of all this stuff. It's time to include the community, to include us. We have a voice, and we want something there, we just don't want to this scale. Just work with us, because we do want something to build, but we want it to honor the textile community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kenzie Biggins, I'm at 28 Burdette Street, and I will continue to express my opposition to woven. For some reason, this project has been continually presented as something that's just for the business corridor, and that will only impact the business corridor. But West Greenville isn't just a business corridor. We are a robust community made up of a delightful mix of different ages, races, renters, owners, and businesses who will all be directly impacted by this development in our neighborhood. Now, to their credit and my disdain, one of the investors has skillfully created messaging, pitting our neighbors against the business owners, saying that the neighbors don't want the businesses to succeed and thrive, but this is not true. My community simply feels like we deserve to have a voice in something that will impact our lives 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Think about it for a moment. How would you feel if your life was impacted 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, by something that you did not have a voice on or you were not consulted on? As I've gone through this daunting process, I've had to fight to be heard by investors and by elected officials who don't live with us and feel like they know what is best for us. But through this process, I've come to love my neighbors even more than I did before. I began to understand how my community, the community I chose, has been a historically overlooked situation where they've had to fight for every square inch of our community. We aren't asking for no development, ever. We're asking for connectedness. We don't want to see the I-20 of Greenville go up in our neighborhood. We are asking for an active conversation that involves our community and the business owners together. We're asking for acknowledgement of the uniqueness of our community with the care and attention that it deserves, especially with our narrow corridors. We're asking for the space and access to be, to be made of our community members as we do not have, as not all of our community members have the means and ability to take off of work with changing voting schedules, reliable transportation, and the comfort to stand in some of these very intimidating spaces. We're asking to be thoughtfully heard instead of having to fight. We're asking that protection of West Greenville is just as important as the protection of Augusta Road, North Main, and the Alta Vista neighborhood. One person's economic gain should not be wet cast our community for the future. Is it worth the absolute detriment of West Greenville for this building to go up? And more importantly, do, does my voice, do my neighbors' voices, do our voices count as part of your voter base? Thank you.
Ms. Willard and Edmonds. Willard and Edmonds.
Good evening, my name is Virginia Willard. I live at 25 Draper Street in Brandon Mill itself. I've previously spoken and written about many things that I find wrong with the woven project, but tonight I just want to address the planning commission report, which you have just heard. Many of us here tonight attended all three of the planning commission meetings, the information meeting, the two hearings, and then their vote to recommend the project to you. We listened carefully to their many questions and concerns, and what the answers from the developer, and we listened to comments as they voted. When the vote was taken, often the commissioners related their approval to the Greenville 2040 Plan. One counselor said it was the hardest vote she's ever had to cast, but in the end, voted to approve because it complied with the intent of the Greenville 2040, or so she thought. I don't think the 2040 Plan for Greenville intends anything like woven to be built in that neighborhood. in that neighborhood, in the historic West Greenville, Brandon Mill neighborhood. While the Village of West Greenville was identified in the 2040 Plan as a potential node, that node was never defined and still hasn't been what it is to look like. The Village of West Greenville has a micro-plan, but the community was never, very little, few numbers of the community were involved in that. It has little community involvement, little specificity, and was never adopted, as I understand, by any governing body. So what was the plan that this is supposed to fit into? It seems unclear to me. So if approval by the Planning Commission's recommendation to you is based on the Greenville 2040 Plan, that seems like a bit of a shaky foundation at best. I would like to add that the changes made to the building are quite attractive. It's not a bad-looking building. The architects did a good job. It just doesn't belong where they want to put it. Put it on Academy Road or somewhere else, it'll look just fine, but not in our neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Edmonds?
Hi, my name is LaShawn Edmonds. I live on Gower Street. I want to say thank you for allowing me to speak today on behalf of my community. Twenty-some years ago, I believe, when I was attending the Planning Commission meetings with Pastor Richburg and Father Patrick, one of very few there, when all of this began, you guys remember one vision. And in that meeting, it was said that we will listen to our community. We are okay with bringing in a mixture of high-end homes with affordable housing, but we will listen to our community. I want to bring that back to your attention today. Listen to the community. As a community leader, it is very important for the aesthetics of West Greenville to stay that small country town. The pictures I saw today, guys, it looks like Atlanta. We all want that big city look in our little country town. People move to South Carolina, particularly Greenville, number three, by the way, because of the country home and feel that we have here. As a budding entrepreneur, I am all about business, don't get it twisted, okay? As a manufacturer, that I will be bringing, you know, jobs here to our city, jobs here to our state, I want us to do it the right way. I don't want to leave our community out of our decisions. I want us to come together as a group and consider everything that everyone has presented today. And think of it, when West Greenville, when my grandfather, who built his house, okay, he was a veteran, he built his house by picking up things off the side of the street because he couldn't afford it. Him and his brothers moved relocated from Newbury, South Carolina, and that is how that house was built that I purchased from my father so he could pay off his home. So I live there now, been over there for about seven years, and because I didn't want it to, you know, get taken by-